This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, East Hampton Media, perfect. Okay, everybody, good evening. I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for March 12th at 6:00. And if we could please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, all right. Perfect, we will have our quorum tonight. Joy is coming back and she said she'd be a little bit late, so we have a quorum now, but we'll hopefully have a full board here, so. All right, do we have any open time for the public? Robert, yes, Robert then Lucy.
Robert Floyd, College Highway speaking as town moderator. Just want to review some dates, make sure we're all on the same page.
Thank you.
I will be leaving town tomorrow, going to alligator country. I will be back in four weeks on April 14th. I will be looking at the meetings live, you know, online, virtual. And if there's any need to have me, by Zoom, I'm available, or phone, or whatever. So the town meeting is eight weeks away.
Don't remind me.
With your Tuesday schedule, you would sign the warrant on Tuesday, April 23rd. Or if you're going to be meeting that week on a Thursday, you'd be signing on April 25th. And the warrant needs to be posted no later than Monday, April 29th. Hopefully it would be the week before.
Yep.
And Tuesday, April 30th, at noon, all presentation materials need to be in the town clerk's office.
Okay.
And the town moderator and your town meeting information session will be Thursday, May 2nd, right here in this room at 7:00. And the meeting's on May 7th. And I need to leave now because I'm conducting a class in Illinois.
All right.
So we're all set?
Perfect, thanks, Robert.
All right, thank you very much.
Have a good trip.
Cheers.
Hopefully we won't call on you in Florida, so.
Yes.
Enjoy, take care. Yeah, Lucy.
Lucy Dalton, Town Clerk, I just wanted to give a quick update about the elections. It was a very yucky rainy day. We didn't have a very good turnout. We had 1,565 ballots cast. I'm going to be putting up the minutes tomorrow. We have 4,000 over, 4,570 registered voters. It was a, you know, primary. There wasn't a lot on the ballot for candidates, so I think people were a little disoriented because there were so many names, but a lot of the candidates had withdrawn. So a lot of the ballots were mail-in, so there wasn't a big turnout for in-person that came that day. But I wanted to just remind people that if you're getting mail-in ballots, to get them back by the night of the election, by 8:00 PM, please. And we are not, we are having mail-in voting for the local election. The local election is May 21st, that's the next election. We're going to be talking to the select board about maybe opting out of in-person voting, early in-person voting for the local election, because the turnout was not good for this one. We had probably 15 people for early in-person voting.
Really?
I know, Stephen did come, but. So just wanted to let you know how it was, so.
And for the town elections, remind us when the papers for nomination papers have to be turned back?
They need to be in by April 2nd, and that is the night of the caucus, so it's going to be a very busy night that night.
April 2nd.
You can do it.
I know, I can. Yep, so. And that is 7:00 to 9:00 in here, and we have to have 25 people for a quorum. We have to elect a chairman, the chairman will run off the nominations, and chairperson, sorry. Chairperson, I apologize, I'm sorry. I apologize, chairperson.
With him all, or?
Okay.
And.
So that'll be done April 2nd?
April 2nd, yes.
Perfect.
Lots of openings still, not a lot of papers taken out.
Yeah, so people that are interested, please, go into Lucy's office and pull your papers for.
Finance committee, no, no papers taken out for finance committee, just so.
Okay, well, hopefully they will.
No, no. All right, so I just wanted to give you an update on the elections.
Good, no, thanks.
Okay.
At least that many turned out, it's not, not a great showing, as you say, but at least with the weather we had, it's not, not terrible.
Okay.
It seemed like there were more people wandering in, though.
I know, it did seem like it was busy at times, so, but yeah. Okay, thank you.
Good, thanks, Lucy. Thanks to you and all your team and everybody for doing all the counting, et cetera, so, okay. Anybody else, open time, all right? If not, I see, if we don't mind, I see two candidates in the audience that are two of our appointees, so I'm going to make a move to just put that a little bit ahead of the agenda here, to do the appointments before we do the reports. It won't take us too long, and then if you have to leave, I know you're juggling many things, so if you have to leave, we can do that. So I'm going to turn it over to, let's see, where we got it? Here, hold on, yeah, somewhere, it's in my package, wrong package. So we have two appointments before, so I'll take one and I'll turn it on to Dan for the other one. So first one, Reggie Green is putting in his hat to be part of both the Cost Efficiencies Committee and the Finance Committee. And these would be short-term. The Finance Committee is an elected position, so this would get you only until the election, and then we have to take it from there. And then the Cost Efficiencies Committee itself, actually right now, its term goes until June, but we hope to continue that, but that, until the term is ended, that's what it is. So Reggie, why don't you come on up and just give us a couple of words of your background, and tell us why you're kind of interested, and how you got to here?
So we just moved to Southampton in September.
Where do you live, actually, just give your name and address?
We live at Eight Gill Farm Road.
Okay.
So if anybody even knows, there is a Gill Farm Road, and we're the only house on it right now.
You're the first house on it, all right.
Another house is being built, so there will be eight houses by the time we're done.
Great, yeah.
So we've lived in Vermont and New Hampshire for the past 35 years, and I retired from my career in banking in June, sold our house in May, actually, and couldn't find anything until we bought this house in September. It was that hard, it was crazy. So I'm retired, so I have time. I was a banker all those years, my last stint was as CEO of a bank in Claremont, New Hampshire, which is just up 91. We moved here because my wife's family is in Holyoke, so her parents are still doing well, and her two brothers live there, and she and I met at UMass a long, long time ago.
Very good, great, well, thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right. So with that, we have the appointment for two committees, for finance and for cost efficiencies. If someone would like to make a motion, please?
I'll move the motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so this is Finance Committee until May 21, 2024, and Cost Efficiencies until June 30th, 2024, okay? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, hearing no opposition, motion approved, welcome, thank you. All right, and Dan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. We have Hazel Ortiz, she's got the appointment from the Conservation Commission. We have the opportunity as the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, sorry?
Oh, yeah, I always do that, my apologies.
You're getting closer to you.
I'll just eat it. Yeah, sorry, starting over, so Hazel Ortiz met with us, part of the Conservation Commission. She is looking to join. The Conservation Commission was fully in support of her joining, based on her experience and background, we think we are more than lucky to have her willing to participate and help our town out, so. With that, Hazel, would you like to say hi, introduce yourself, please?
It's always good just to meet people and put names and faces together, so, great, thank you both for coming, I know you've had other schedules there, so, yeah, thanks.
Hi, thanks for having me, my name's Hazel, I live on 11 Cold Spring Road. We just moved to Southampton last March from East Hampton. Before that, I lived in Eastern Massachusetts, Lowell, close to Boston. I'm very happy to be here, this town is very much my speed. It's beautiful, and I, given my work as a biologist and some of the thesis work I've done at UMass Amherst, I think that the Conservation Commission would be a good fit.
And you're currently at Fish and Wildlife?
Yes, yep, I'm a Fish and Wildlife biologist. I am not here representing them, but I will use that experience to help conservation in this town as much as I can.
And one of your strong suits is invasives, which we have many of them in Southampton.
Yes, invasive plants, yes.
Invasive plants, exactly, we have many of them in town, so.
Yes.
I'm sure Concom will be pleased to have you help them out on various trails, et cetera.
Yeah, very excited to tackle those.
I'm sure you will, yeah, okay.
Right, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, and so, Dan, the appointment?
If I could have the honor to make the appointment of Hazel Ortiz, the Conservation Commission, for a term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, hearing no opposition, motion is approved.
I'd like to have both of you on.
And welcome, and thank you especially, both relative newcomers to town, so thank you very, very much for finding out about town business and willing to step up, so thank you, a lot.
So Chris, just, they may want to know the next steps?
Yeah, just one thing, yeah.
30 seconds, 30 seconds, we want to put you right to work.
If Lucy is around the corner at the town clerk's office, you just have to swear in before you can actually be at a meeting and vote, so that would be your next step.
So normally they get a communication from Judy?
Yeah, they would, so, but you'd have to come back in once you get a communication, but if Lucy happens to be there, she might swear you in tonight.
Yeah, she's right next door, so you go take the old note.
Yeah, see if she's there, if not, we'll send you a note from the town administrator's office, and then you can pop in next week sometime. Thank you, guys. All right, thank you, thank you for reminding me of that, John.
That's what I'm here for.
Well, let's, let's move on, all right, so now to reports, okay, first one up, Christina, Council on Aging.
Good evening, everyone, even though it's disconcerting because it's still light-out, so you don't realize it's evening. I haven't actually had the privilege of meeting a few of you in person, so, nice to meet you. Just the back, a little background, I started at the beginning of August, so I'm still in my first year here. So were you guys able to get the report I wrote up?
We have this in our packages, and I think probably you can just go through the highlights, I mean, don't read all of it, please, but give us the summary highlights and the various things that you'd like to bring to our attention, that would be great.
Okay, I will mention, more so for any public listening, that since August when I began, we did change our hours that were open Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 4:00. It used to be 3:00. We are open to 4:00, and our wheelchair lift van is still running Monday through Friday, so. So there's been, you know, many changes in the last eight months. First, of course, I became director because Joan Linahan retired the end of June, so there was a little break, and then I began. Kate DeSanto, who was our previous volunteer coordinator, actually took on the new role of outreach worker, that was a newly developed role, that was, the decision was made to be funded by the ARPA fund, so she became our much-needed outreach worker. Along the lines of Kate, she also went through long, extensive training to become a Shine counselor, which basically means she can counsel and help people with their Medicare questions, and it's great to have someone in-house that can do this, and she's already met with at least 50 different people, so there clearly was a great need out in the community. Pam Connet was also hired in October, she's our new program coordinator, she has, you know, assisted in bringing new programming in and really, you know, became part of the team really quickly. And then finally, our office team became complete in November when Amy Sugahara began, and she took over for the volunteer coordinator position that Kate was. And I'd be remiss to not mention, we also have an administrative assistant, Darlene Medioca. But to speak to Amy, she's also succeeded in growing our volunteer pool, and it really did need to be looked at again, a lot of query checks going out, because we do not recommend anyone without running that background check.
And these are volunteers to help seniors at home?
So when I say volunteers, a portion of them volunteer straight at the center, you know, when we have events or things, but we also are looking for volunteers that could help older adults, you know, on a wide variety of, you know, homemaking tasks, electrical, you know, outdoor work. And it's not, and it's not under the assumption that there would be no cost to these services, but it would be someone that we can at least say, you know, we ran a query check, they've been, they're licensed, they're vetted, and they have availability in their schedules to work with said people. Whether, what they charge ultimately is, or don't charge, is ultimately up to them, the business. So the other big news in November for our senior center was we started a grab-and-go meal, so we now serve Wednesday lunches. The lunch is provided by Highland Valley Elder Services. You know, I would say it's about half and half that people stay at the center and eat, and the other half maybe take it and, you know, go home and eat. We average about 40 people a week for that, and it continues to grow, and it's great because we're seeing faces that we have not seen in the past, and of course, that's always a goal, is to, you know, grow services to more people. So we have a lot going on, you know, going on in the center, a lot of different programming, include, and we also have hearing and foot clinics, tech support appointments, we have bus trips that we run through, actually, this year will be landmark travel, as well as monthly MGM van trips. We have a, let's see, what else do I want to mention? Senator, someone from Senator Velez's office, or himself, but I will say, I've not seen himself yet, but someone from his office at least comes monthly to our Wednesday coffee hour, and Michelle Murdock, who I believe is also speaking tonight, so she can speak to this, of course, who's our, she's our new Veteran Services agent, has also begun a monthly Veterans Coffee Hour, and that was very well received as well. On average, we're looking at about 160 people a month, and that's just capturing the people that sign into our system, so that's not necessarily capturing all the outreach appointments Kate has, or people that are just coming in for one reason but don't officially sign up as a member. But in terms of people that are actually kind of signing in, there's, they get a little card and sign in at the door, we're seeing about 160 unique individuals.
For various classes and?
Right, for classes and programming and such. And then again, in addition to Shine Health Insurance Services, we also offer help with housing, fuel assistance, SNAP applications, we're involved in the Triad Lockbox and House Number programs, as well as seeing for seniors, and I don't have the exact numbers, but all those programs have grown this past year when we've run them, so. So, and then just to go over, we do rely very heavily on grants, we do have multiple grants going on. To be clear, we don't receive any funding from the town budget that goes towards programming at the senior center. So to rely on programming, to be able to fund programming and services, because we wouldn't be a really good senior center if we didn't have that part, we do get money through the Formula Fund grant, through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs, so we rely heavily on that. As I mentioned, the outreach worker is funded by an ARPA grant, it's only due to cover her position for maybe another two years, so that is an issue of, we'll need to find another funding source, because it's been made very clear that she's, you know, a necessity, and we've reached a lot of, you know, additional people. We've also received two service incentive grants this year, which is also through that Massachusetts Office of Elder Affairs. One was given to fund six memory cafes, we've held two of them this year, and the other is to expand outreach and marketing. And included in the money for that grant, we were able to purchase a laptop for Kate, our outreach worker, because she had previously been having to use her personal laptop, which I'm sure we can all agree is not an ideal situation. And then finally, just, we also received three cultural, Southampton Cultural Council grants this year that will go towards special programming, so we're always appreciative of that, because I know they get many more requests than they have funding, so. The biggest news of the last six months was, of course, that the Council on Aging received $2.4 million check from the state of David Red Parsons, who, you know, for those not aware, who generously left in his will money to go towards building a new senior center. And a senior center building committee has been formed, and hopefully in this year, land will be purchased, and we all recognize this will be a long, you know, a multi-year process, but we are trying to get started, and that was huge news that we at least received that money. I just wanted to mention really quickly, not in the sense to complain, so do not misunderstand, but just to explain that two of our difficulties in the past few months have been technology and the lack of programming space. Now, the technology part is starting to get much better, so we've made some progress in just the last week, so I will say that. But we have not had computers for everyone that works in our department, many of them do not have profiles to log into a computer, so even if they went to someone else's computer, they can't log in under themselves, so they're having to use, again, not to go into too much detail, but they're having to use other people's profiles, which defeats the purpose of the security. And then a few people are still waiting for email addresses, so I mention that because it has affected our work and what we can accomplish, but we are starting to attack some of those issues. And then the space issue is just a non, is just an ongoing, you know, well, an ongoing issue, that we have more programming and services we want to offer, and we just don't have the space, and we're already at that, this, we're not even talking a year in the future, we're talking now. There's disruption, there's overlapping, there's, there's a lot of things we can't hold that we would absolutely want to be holding, and a lot of services, we don't have space to meet with people that we'd absolutely want to, you know, meet with, so.
And part of that is because you've got one large room, so.
That's a huge part of it, right, 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 so the space, even, it would actually be great if there was even just a wall that made it two rooms, but it's a nice, big one room, if you just, but you can't have multiple things going on, so. So, and then, so the goals for 2024, which are going to remain our goals, is to increase overall membership, which, as I just said, does start to contradict because of some of the space issues, but we still want to increase overall membership, and most importantly, the number of older adults that we are reaching out to, and that doesn't mean people that necessarily come in to the senior center, but that we are helping and assisting in some way, so that is our goals. And I just wanted to thank the Select Board, they have always been very supportive of the COA, and me in particular, as a new employee here, and even Scott, who's only been here a couple of weeks, I can say that, he has been a driving force actually about getting us some IT issues, so he gets a special shout-out. So thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
Nope.
Yeah, Dan?
Yeah, I was going to bring up, you mentioned the technology, and I'm the liaison to the technology committee, so I wanted to kind of probe that a little bit more and see if there's some ways that we can help.
Okay.
So it sounds like you need more computers, right? Have you filed a capital request for that?
We didn't for technology, we went a different route in what we applied for that, for.
You have enough computers now with the grant, right?
So with the new laptop that we were able to purchase, yes.
It's been a matter of getting everything connected, because there's been nothing?
Right.
The typical situation with Novus and getting everything set up for new employees.
Right, but the infrastructure's there, we just need to get it all set up.
At least it's made some headway.
Oh, yes, yes, which I said from the beginning, we're definitely making progress, but, yeah, it's just, you know, I very much appreciate that. At this point, it basically relies on Novus getting all of this set up.
You do have that contract in place with them now?
Okay, yeah. Yes, no, we had someone to ourselves for half a day last week, and it was glorious. Of course, there was, we never could get everything done in a half a day, but we made a big chunk, so.
And just one for clarification for people that may be listening, you mentioned the ARPA grant, just the outreach worker funded by that, just for people knowing that, that's not the ARPA money that we've all been talking about at Select Board, but this was special money that was an earmark through Senator Velez's office, is that correct?
Right, right, you're right, yes, thank you.
So that's where that's getting used from, so that's great.
Right, and that's what has a limit to it, so we need to think ahead about how we're going to.
I think it's all going to be spent probably by '26, I think, yeah.
Right.
Somewhere in there, so, yeah, good.
All right, and in terms of, the other one was programming space, you brought that up, the other one was programming space that you brought up?
Yes.
Is there, what, I guess, is it particularly for events, or is it more for like meeting, one-on-one meetings, like what kind of space?
Honestly, both, but I guess at this point, I'd say events affects the most people for sure, because there's overlap, and then they're not quiet the next group, and so even when we don't book things at the same time, if they're stacked, it also causes a lot of trouble. And then there's just things we have to say no to that for any, not for any, I mean, we would be able to do it otherwise, but we just don't have the space. I will say that there's times that we overflow into this room, assuming, of course, it's not booked. I'm not sure how all of you feel about the use of that, because I understand it's not the senior center, but especially if we're holding like a special one-off event there, but we don't want to have to cancel everything else, we try to have it held in here.
If you have like Spanish class or something, for example?
Right, right.
I see no problem using any space in the town building, maybe we can set up a way for you to reserve the space, like some type of outlook-based room reservation system? And so you can know when other groups are planning on using those spaces?
Right, no, that would be absolut, yeah, that would be great.
Right now, you're only able to do that through mytown.gov, to see what rooms are booked, you know, between here and there's conference room, but maybe we can work out a better calendar somehow to make it?
That would be great, thank you.
We should use it.
Good, thanks, Christina, much appreciated.
Well, thank you all.
All right, thank you very much, all right. All right, next up, Johanna in the library, please.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Johanna Rodriguez Douglas, I am the Director at the Edwards Public Library, and I'm ably accompanied by Jessica Huffnagle and Pax Huffnagle, future Select Board member, and Kristin Yancuzzo, also a member of our trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the Edwards Public Library's work in 2023, 24, and our plans for the future. I've been the Director since November of 2022, and before that, I was the youth librarian for eight and a half years. And there are folks who may wonder, do we need a library when access to everything is at our fingertips? Didn't the pandemic change our world to a purely digital one? Aren't libraries just for small children? And the answer to these questions is yes, no, and oh, no, no. In fact, we need libraries more than ever, to vet information, to provide access and equity to all members of the community, and indeed, to create community. We pride ourselves in this work and in our ability to adapt to changing times and needs. The use of the Edwards Public Library and its circulation far from decreasing is rising. Our statistics show that we are averaging 168 more circulations each month this year from last year. Our meeting room is in high demand, and we host a slew of weekly programs for all ages, from storytimes to craft clubs, to book clubs, author events, inspirational from storytimes to craft clubs, to book clubs, author events, inspirational speeches, paint nights, wine tasting. We are more than a building. We are a vibrant community resource. Just ask our patrons, volunteers, and staff. So budget spending and concerns. We have to answer to our patrons, the town, the Select Board, but we also have to answer to the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, the MBLC. As many of you know, we have a mandate from the state of Massachusetts to maintain the municipal appropriation requirement called the MAR. I have a letter here that explains it. Do you mind if I approach and give you all a copy?
Yeah, some of this we should, yeah, have.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a complicated thing, is the MAR. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks. Sorry, Scott, not for you.
I'm familiar with it.
So you have that, and so we don't have to sort of go over the issues about it unless you want to ask me anything. So in response to the town's laudable desire to bring our salaries in line with other municipalities, I have presented a budget with an increase of 3% for staff. This brings our budget up by just over $5,000. We went from $190,143 to $195,433. In order to keep the MAR stable, I chose to freeze or even decrease other lines in my initial proposal. Our maintenance and expense lines are based on how much we actually spent last year in my current proposal. However, due to rising prices and inflationary pressures, I would ask that our maintenance and expense stay level funded and that our actual budget be $195,933, which I can talk to you more about. Due to the increases in our circulation, I have also added more time for substitute librarians. On Saturdays, we are swamped. A typical Saturday, we're open for three and a half hours and have over 500 circulations and 62 patrons. A long-term goal, so imagine some people are taking out 50 items at a time, Stephen. So a long-term goal is to fund another Saturday position so that three librarians would be present, and plus, it's just safer, safer. Priorities, activities. There are pressing maintenance priorities, which I presented as capital expenditures earlier this year. So for example, pump two of our septic system needs to be replaced. We were fortunate that when pump one was hit by lightning, the repair was covered by insurance, but for pump two, we may not be so lucky. Our conference room is in constant use, and last year, the conference room was used 156 times. This year will be more. So after 30 years, the room needs a fresh coat of paint, and the rug is worn and soiled. We are not presenting our best face to the committees and boards that use this room, so I presented details about that capital expenditure request also in the CIC packet. I met with the Ad Hoc Tech Committee about the purchase of a media center that would make our room more user-friendly and modern. So how do we, the library, show our good faith to the citizens? Last July, we received $10,000 to update the lights in the facility. Unfortunately, that process has been delayed, and Chris can give you details about that process, but per the terms of the grant, I need to use that money by May 31st. Our interior and exterior lights are inefficient and add to the cost of our utilities. Our youth librarian, Andrea Leclerc, also just received another $10,000 grant for a sensory garden for children and adults who have sensory processing, autism, and developmental delays, but also for everyone who would benefit from such a garden, including those with dementia or Alzheimer's. Our Friends Group works hard with fundraising events like our Big Book Sale and Bake Sale in May, and they provide, the Friends provide free or discounted passes to local museums, internet service, including the Wi-Fi in the library, and they also host interesting and fun events for the library. So in short, we do work to use our resources wisely and to find money. In 2026, the building will be 30 years old. I appreciate the effort that Southampton has made to maintain the facility and hope that we can continue to preserve it. The Youth Department continues to work with the Collaborative to bring educational storytimes and playtimes to our youngest patrons. We host Lego Clubs and special events like the Halloween Party, the Valentine's Day Tea. This year, 42 children came to tea to enjoy the Mermaid Princess, the special guest. And in June, our summer reading program will kick off with an interactive African drumming circle. Last year's program broke records by registering 220 children. So personnel staffing updates. We are fortunate to have a brain trust of staff and volunteers who love the library. I am grateful to have met and hired Andrea Leclerc last April and for my many years of working with Lisa Shea and Emily Munska. We added Gina Terrell to our substitute librarian list this year. As I noted earlier, I am delighted that Southampton is actively trying to raise staff salaries. Our dedicated staff deserves it. In January, our longtime cataloger and friend, I call her Librarian Emerita, Carol Goulet, completed her grant to upload and preserve Southampton's historical documents. The library pays for and maintains the historical resources of Southampton website and the physical documents that tell Southampton's story. Plans and events for the next four to six months. So along with facilitating our monthly book club, I will continue to work on our long-range plan, and this will enable us to compete for more grants. I'm also working with Barbara Golden on her author event, March 26th, with the Friends on the Community Donation Day, April 20th, with Madeline Hunter on her memoir-writing workshop in May, and with Scott Maloney on his LCC-sponsored event, I Am, on May 30th. I've also been in contact with the Norris School about starting an English Conversation Circle for parents and caregivers of ELL students at Norris School. The goals of the program would be better cultural understanding of events, greater understanding of materials at home, and greater ability to assist children with their homework. I am also working with All Hamptons Read on a series of events in support of the amazing book, Master Slave Husband/Wife by Ilhan Wu. We will be hosting How It Worked Here, an evening of Underground Railroad History focusing on Western Massachusetts. The special event will be April 4th, the 56th anniversary of Dr. King's assassination. Then we will launch into summer reading. The library has a total of 39,365 total holdings. Downloadable eBooks and audio circulated 209,460 times in 2023. We received 6,942 items from other libraries. We lent out 5,923 items to other libraries. And along with accessing that historical resources of Southampton from our website, a user can go to the Find It tab on our website, and there they have access to a world of information about history, art, science, a vast trove of articles, many specially vetted for children. I often send children there. In 2022, the system added legal forms to the site. I had a call just today about landlord-tenant issue to look at the site. These forms include real estate, wills, healthcare, and have been used and accepted in Massachusetts. In 2023, Heritage Quest was added to the site so that patrons can do free genealogical research, and all these resources are available free of charge. Thank you.
Great, thank, thank you, all right. Questions?
Any questions?
Yeah.
Very impressive.
Oh, thank you.
No, and I know one thing, just back on your lighting, so just for Scott, so one of the four projects that we presented through the Green Communities is some upgrading of the lighting, and so hopefully we'll get some answers from the Department of Revenue soon, because there are four projects that we presented through that program that are showing from every source's point of view that we would meet some energy savings, and they're sitting with DOR to approve, and hopefully, we can push a couple buttons and make that happen sooner so that we can get that done. But one of the projects, one of the four is for the library, and then just to say, thanks for this, this thing on the MAR. I know every year we go through budget, it's always a confusion as to where you have to be per, you know, state regulations in terms of percentage of, of your budget vis-à-vis the, the state association, so we will keep this paper handy.
Right, that, that has that little, that little box gives the summary of it. Thanks again.
And I think, actually, while I have both of you here, what we're planning on so far, you can jot it down, on March, hello, what day are we? May, maybe, that could be May, you know, March. March 21, I think, John, right, is the next Finance Committee meeting. I believe we said we would try to do FinCom on March 21, which is a Thursday, and so we're planning on trying to do a joint meeting and then have COA and Library and probably Board of Health, if you would like to come and present your budgets to both the Finance and Select Board at the same time, so you wouldn't have to do two separate meetings. So we'll, we'll get a note out about that.
We can get it, yeah.
Yeah, but March 21st is the date we have penciled in right now.
Jessica just reminded me, and just for the record, I just wanted to thank Lucy Dalton. I had forgotten to thank Lucy. She included library card applications in the census mailing, and we were able to make, I think, about 95 new library cards over the past month.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, good, thank you. Appreciate it, all right, very good. Okay, I don't think Michelle is here. Did you get any written thing from Michelle? No, okay. All right, so right now, we don't have our Veterans Agent report, but if she should show up, we'll, we'll fit her in, okay? Thank you, guys, all right. Much appreciated, very thorough reports. Okay, so with that, let's go on down to Scott, an Town Administrator Report, your very first one, so take it away, tell us what you'd like.
So this is the first one, but if there's any changes or suggestions or formats that you'd like to see in the future, just let me know, and I can, I can adjust accordingly. So I do want to try maybe a few new things going forward and see, see how it goes, so. I'd also like an opportunity to meet with everyone individually, depending on what your schedule is, so I don't know if I can reach out to you and email you, and or maybe after the meeting, I can just get a few dates and times, so it's, it's best for everybody.
Yeah, would be great, yeah, sure.
The Town Accountant and I, we were able to attend the Financial Forecast on February 29th, that was prevented by, presented by DOR and the DLS. That was actually a pretty intensive training about going over the spreadsheets and cherry sheets and 10 years of data and inputting it, so Bradley knows a little bit more about it than me, but it was still good training, so.
But it was, it was worthwhile.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's great. I think that's the first time they've actually offered that, to my knowledge, in quite a, quite a long time, if ever, I'm not sure, but I'm glad we, the timing was just, just right, even though it was your, for your very first week here, but yeah.
We did have a little bit of issues with the phones from March 1st to the 4th, so in case you got any complaints or anything, they are back and operational, thankfully, but after the phones were put back online, we did have some network and Ethernet access problems for a couple of days. I was able to kind of get everyone at least back online just by logging into our spotty Wi-Fi network. So that was a temporary fix, but eventually I was able to get Novus out, and they corrected the problem, so. We were kind of, it was kind of down for a couple of days, so it was a little bit touch and go.
And part of that was due to our old server kind of getting toward the end of its life, right?
Yep. So that brings me to the good point is, Novus is going to be out this weekend to do a transfer of our old server to the new server, and that's going to include changing to Microsoft 365, all the accounts, everyone's going to have access to that. I've been working with Art, Art's been able to send out a lot of advisory notices, and we're going to really have to do maybe some in-person training for 365 coming up, but they're going to be, initially, the file transfer is going to be this weekend, and they're going to be in Town Hall all day Monday in case anyone can't access their files or emails get deleted or whatever happens, so printer support is another big one. So it should be an interesting Monday, but I think everything will go pretty smoothly. They've done hundreds and thousands of, of the transitions, so. I was able to attend the MMA Legislative Breakfast in Hoyoke on Friday. It was a good meet and greet with our state delegation, as well as a lot of the local town administrators and Select Board members and town managers, so that was worthwhile. I did meet with our town moderator, Robert Floyd, on Monday, just to go over an introduction and go over town meeting and get a little bit of history, so that was very helpful. KP Law was able to send over the purchase and sale for 89 Clark Street, as well as some of the draft language for the warrant and article. It was circulated to the Senior Center Building Committee, so we received some feedback for that. Also talked to Amanda Lewis, who's the Mass Trails Director, and she was able to give me an overview of all the grants that Southampton has received and the necessary steps for an extension, which I'll be drafting a letter and coming back to Select Board for, so relatively simple. I was able to go to the Parks Meeting, Senior Center Building Commission Committee, Public Safety Building Committee, Conservation Commission, Greenway Committee, Community Preservation, and the Council on Aging, and I still need to go to the Library Board of Trustees, Planning Board, I believe, is next week, and there's a couple others I, I are still outstanding.
Board of Health and.
Board of Health, yep.
Couple of others, probably.
I did miss the Ad Hoc last night.
Uh-huh, okay.
The other meeting went a little bit long, but I did try to line up, but, and then I did attach the property list of taxes. That was from last meeting. In the packet, and I'll try to get it out earlier along with the rest of the information, but did just include an invitation to.
This is Rural and Western Mass Conference, yeah.
Thank you. I lost my copy. So if anyone's interested in registering, please let me know. I also included just some updated language for the charter language, the original language that was in your package for Section 626 was missing just a few sections when I transcribed it, so that's the whole, the whole Telecommunications Act.
Okay, we'll probably get, get to that when we get to that agenda item. Yeah, I think on the Rural and Western Mass Conference, this is not until April 27th, but it's here in North Hampton, and Ann Goby is the new Director of Rural Affairs out of the Governor's Office, and she would be a good person to get to know a little bit. I've met her only once, but somebody we can look toward for grant support and various other things, so there is a little bit of cost to it, so we should put in our names via Scott, and then Judy can work on registering whoever wants to go as a group, so not a problem, anybody that would like to go, just get your name in, and we will get it done. Sounds great, okay. Any other comments?
No, but.
No, nope, nope, okay. I think the one thing, yeah, we'll, we'll go back on the, that tax list and just see what we really wanted to get there, whether maybe some other information we might need to get from that, just to understand that in terms of delinquent taxes and whatever there might be out there for collection. Okay, good, thank you, Scott, appreciate it. We will take that as a first one and keep on moving. All right, any, just some Select Board reports, has anybody had any particular meetings this week, Dan?
Yeah, the, so the Technology Committee's been mentioned a number of times tonight. We did have a meeting yesterday. One of the things that was brought up is we now have Novus as our IT provider for the town, so we have that contract in place, which should help as we encounter these issues in the future. Also, we discussed the phone system in town and getting a more direct access and contact list for, probably for you, Scott, so that if an event were to occur again, it can be addressed more quickly. We also talked about the municipal light plant, that those requests for information have gone out to both the South Hadley slash Hollyoke Fiber Provider as well as Westfield, so we have until the end of the month to provide a response, at which point, the Technology Committee will review those and provide a guidance to the Select Board, who will make the final decision as to which one would move forward, so.
And have a con-con? You're there now, sorry.
I thought I was done, I apologize. So yes, we were able to get, Hazel Teas was able to meet with us, which was great. We had a number of discussions about the projects in town. One thing that's interesting. in town. One thing that's interesting that's coming up is, we have a project to clear out invasives coming up. So, that is forward progress. And also, at the Clark House, the Clark property, there was a proposal to put in a stream crossing bridge. So, that's moving forward. And, yeah, I think that's about all I need to report on in that.
Good. Just a quick question. I know, do you know anything about the, there's the bridge over at Manhan Meadows that's got to be, that was part of one of the Mass Trails grants that may be running toward an end. I think it goes until December, the grant does, from what I understood from Diana Fetterman, but that one got delayed forever because of waiting for a rivers permit, which finally came. So, is there progress?
So, that was something that was a topic back when I first started on the Conservation Commission.
For a while.
So, is that...
Can you hear me okay?
Is that moving?
I'm getting eclipsed between my two favorite ladies.
Yeah, that's all right.
Sorry.
The table in here.
I don't know if we can do...
No, it's more, yeah, we'll just talk.
Yeah, we need to...
I am especially interested and anxious about this topic, so...
The bridge. Is that what you're talking about?
Because they had a design, I believe, done on it and so forth, and everything had just been delayed. But they do have a grant from Mass Trails that needs to be used by a certain amount of time, and there's a certain season where they can actually get down.
Yep, absolutely. So, this summer...
Sure that they're on top of it.
Would be prime time for that. So...
Speak about the state of the contract for technical design on the bridge that we can put out to RFP.
No, I don't know enough to talk about that at this point. It's something I can look into.
It seems to be a case of miscommunications between our temporary revolving staff and the consultants, in this case, the engineers. And I think somebody needs to be persistent.
Yeah, it was an issue with the consultants. Was it a topic on the agenda?
It was, but this is obviously my first meeting in attendance, and just trying to get up to speed with everything else. So, I'll definitely...
I would check with the Chair to make sure she's aware that the grant is coming.
Yeah, what little I had heard, I got from the associate member, Diana Fetterman, who had been managing the grant part of it. So, but I assume a conservation agent is dealing with some of this as well. Good, all right.
Well, Diana's inquiry, and mine as well, prompted a brief exchange that re-clarified where we were stopped. And that's the better part six weeks ago.
Okay. All right. Now, we will have some new energy here, and we can keep things moving forward. All right.
Yeah, I'll have a fuller report for you next time.
Yeah, just see what we know about it, yeah. Just a little bit of backstory.
Especially an exact date for when it's, that grant is...
Oh, the grant is...
Yeah, the exact date.
Yeah, I'm fairly sure it's December. I thought it might be June, and that was what was worrying me, because a lot of the Mass Trails ones...
If people on the exact date, they pay attention.
Right, yes. The homework is due.
Yeah.
Well, there's another sticky wicket. The work can only be performed during a certain season. So, you have to have the bridge.
Yeah, so they can't put it off.
Put out the bid, order delivered.
Sounds like a timeline would be a nice thing to have, or to put in place. So, we'll get that.
Right, yeah. And I think the, yeah, that's fine. I think the issue with Mass Trails is that this particular grant had already gotten an extension because of the delay with the rivers permit. So, whether Mass Trails would be...
Will make a move.
Amenable to another one might be questionable. So, the need to be moving on it would be great.
It's going to happen.
Good, thank you. Do I assume you may not have had anything, or am I assuming wrong?
No, you are assuming correctly. I am back now. Thank you for everyone for filling in the gaps. I appreciate it.
Welcome back, welcome back. All right. Steven?
I don't think I have anything to add.
Planning Board, anything?
No, Planning Board will be meeting later this week. That's the cycle. You mentioned Board of Health coming up. Assessors, we've heard and will speak more about it, key issue and text title. I'd add, for the assessors, that I sure hope we have several good candidates running for those positions, because I think we presently have three members, and one is not, the Chair is not running for reelection.
Your mic is hiding behind your... That's fine. Yeah, so, yeah.
Board of Assessors is down to three members and would be down to two with expiration. So, that's really important. Next time we meet, I'll have a lot more.
All right, sounds good. All right. John?
So, like Steven, most of my meetings are kicking off tomorrow and running till the next one. But I continue to meet bi-weekly, or I'm sorry, weekly with the Hall District Committee Subcommittee that sole focus is to direct and oversee any oversight of central office within the school district that needs to be done and implemented, given all the changes that are happening, and meeting the budget guidelines. Secondly, that's coupled with a bi, every Friday, every other Friday meeting with DESI to make sure that we are on task. I'll just...
Again, DESI...
Department of Education.
OT.
Yep, sorry. With DESI and the representative that's assigned to us is one of their Deputy Directors, Jay Sullivan, who is a plain-spoken individual, which I appreciate when someone asks the question, "Well, if we don't have a business administrator in place and overlapped, what are you going to do? Are you going to come in and take over the district financially?" And his answer was, "I'll answer that by telling you I'm going to turn around the mirror and say, 'What are you going to do?' Because if you don't have an answer, we're going to tell you what you're going to do, and you're going to pay for it." So, you know, we have, in theory, March 18th is our deadline to get the regional budget done. And then we have our own bylaw that says Norris's budget needs to be done submitted by April 1st.
Okay, yeah.
Next, tomorrow night, School Committee is meeting to, in theory, approve their final budget. I have yet to see it. So, I have very low hopes that there is a budget.
And I think we're still, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but I think we're still waiting on dialogue between Mickey and Bradley to be able to close, you know, to reconcile some of the deficiencies with the school budget.
Yeah, I think in the best interest is if Bradley has detailed needs that he needs, that he should be sending me as Chair of the Subcommittee, not as Select Board Member, but, so use my School Committee address, a list of that, so that I can get them into the system and get them to the right folks. Not to go too far into it, but Mickey's currently on emergency leave for a family member issue. So, a lot of plates going.
Yeah. I mean, I know we had gotten our extension to be able to close our books, but we definitely don't want to go to the nth degree to, you know, I'd rather close them early rather than wait to the last minute if we can. But we're waiting on some reconciliations, I think.
And I don't know that we need to talk about it tonight, but actually, on the 21st, when we meet with the Finance in a joint session, we should probably, without having the school in here, we should probably spend 10 minutes talking about what exactly a 1/12 budget is under state statute.
Yep, understanding that.
So that we can collectively be on the same page.
Right, okay, good. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Nothing in particular on the Grant Committee at the present time, so we'll leave it at that. We'll be talking a little bit on the Public Safety and the Senior Center Building Committee's updates as we go along. So, I'll forego any further detail on that until we get to the points, and Scott and I can share information on both of those committees, since in his first week, he managed to attend a number of committee meetings, which is great. I mean, it's a good, maybe a little bit of an overload, but it was at least a chance to be able to meet people and just get a sense of what kind of issues the various committees are discussing. So, much appreciate you making the time to hang out and do that. Many of them were like 6:00 o'clock meetings, and a couple of them I know went a little bit late. So, anyway. All right, let's move on to new business action kinds of items, some of the same old ones that are there. We kind of keep them on here to keep them on till we kind of finish them, I guess, really. I'm not sure if they're new business or they're pending business, but we will call them what they are. Collins Center classification update. So, the update on what's going on with our job descriptions and so forth. So, I'll turn it over to Scott.
So, we, over the last couple of days, we were able to kind of consolidate everything that we've had back from the department heads. We were able to send over most of the job descriptions to the Collins Center. There's still, you know, a couple that are left over that we're trying to track down. I did have some contact with Lindsay Katz, who is the Collins Center representative, and I'm going to have to follow up with her, make sure she's got everything that she needs for job descriptions, and hopefully push her to get it done as soon as possible. So, they should have everything that they need to do their report, and we just have to be waiting for their final report.
Yeah. Well, and even, you know, even I think if we don't have their final report yet, but at least if we have some level of the understanding, I think, of the compensation scale and, you know, per the different grades and so forth. So, you know, as we proceed with budget meetings, we can be able to plug in some of those figures and just understand where we are with our current wages.
And I wonder if a way, because part of this is, I'm assuming the Chair has it, but maybe the Chair has, but if Chair has, none of the rest of us have seen any of these drafts and the tables that have been alluded to. So, given that whatever product is finally developed is going to cause us to be subject to bargaining with non-union members, can't we have an executive session to see, a draft at least give an update without it being public?
Of the, of the what, of the job descriptions?
Well, because what I heard at the last meeting is that the pay, the draft scales are already available to us.
I have not seen them.
No, but Ed made reference to when the question came up of a water technician, what was the range of that. He gave out what he thought was a range. I assume it was coming from that report. I don't know, and I didn't want to ask the question in public session.
I don't know. I don't know that, okay.
But if a draft of the scales does exist, or when it does exist, I think we, if you want to check with KP Law, but I think we could have an executive session to look at it pending its release.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and we will get to that in terms of, you know, future meetings here.
Right, and that might just help us when we get to the whole budget process.
Yeah, I'm thinking we're going to need to have an executive session probably our next meeting, two weeks out, for a couple of other reasons, anyway. So, we may just add it to that agenda. But, yeah. So, at this point in time, I have not seen any kind of a compensation scale at all. But that's, you know, while we're waiting for the full report of how the process went and what their recommendations are, you know, hopefully we'll be able to get something from Lindsay or whomever's on our case over there. Okay, thanks. Appreciate you sticking on that one, Scott. It's been a long process, and we're all anxiously waiting, as are the town employees. Okay, Assessor, Principal Assessor, and Assistant, Admin Assistant update. I think all I know is that those positions were posted, and the timing should be just about finished, if it's not already finished. I think they were posted around the 26th of February, something like that. So, their posting time is up, and then should there be candidates, or if not, they need to still come back before PQB. I think, John?
I think they plan on meeting Thursday night.
Okay.
Right.
There's an Assessor's meeting. I think I saw that on the 14th, there's an Assessor's meeting, I believe.
So, in theory, if they took it up, we could then, PPP, could take it up on Wednesday the 20th.
Okay.
There's still time to, it's probably, if it's not on the agenda, there's time to get it on the agenda, though.
Yeah. Assessors is meeting at 9:00 in the morning on March 14th, so...
Oh, wow.
Yep, according to this, anyway. So, yes, so if they can manage to do whatever they need to do with any other candidates that have come in, or whatever, if there haven't been, but they basically have to update at least the PCF, so we need PCFs to go to...
PPP.
PQB, all these wonderful acronyms. We need Personnel Change Farms to go to the Personnel Policies Procedures Board to sign off on again. So, if there's, hopefully, they've got the right number of hours and whatever they're going to be recommending for salary.
QB is what they need to produce.
No, that's the committee. That's the committee.
What is the document?
PCF.
PCF, for the individual hire.
For both the Assessor and the Admin Assistant.
Yeah, right, because PRF is the requisition.
Right.
Sees the charge.
Yeah. So, if they have their chosen candidates, then they just have to, I think we had a PCF at one point in time, but it had all, you know, the hours were mixed up, et cetera. So, just to do a good, clean one, that we all know what we're talking about for that meeting, so that if Assessors meet on the 14th and can get that done, that's good timing for PQB on the 20th. And then that can move very speedily thereafter.
To us on the 26th.
Yeah, yep, that would be good timing. Okay.
Or potentially, we could take it up on the 21st during the special meeting, it fits in those two things.
Sure, yep. Okay, all right. Senior Center Building Committee update. So, Scott, I think you mentioned a couple of things, but I'll just mention a couple of things that I know. The Perk Test was done over at 89 Clark Street. That's the property that they've been looking at for a long time. That seems to have gone quite well, from what we know. And the Board of Health, as far as I know, the health agent was okay with all of that. There is an appraisal ongoing, which should be back by next week, early next week, I think, from the appraisers. And then, we had, Scott had already reached out to KP Law to try and draft an article for the town meeting warrant about the acquisition of the property. But then also, they've done a draft of a purchase and sale, you said, which has just come in. So, the Building Committee hasn't seen it yet. It just came in this afternoon.
Right. Fantastic.
Okay, so that's moving along. So, there may be some things that we have to still look at, obviously, but it's still in draft form. But at least, things are moving, I think, in good shape. And then there will be, at some point, there'll need to be a title search and all that kind of thing. But that's, you know, not immediate before we get to town meeting.
Can you refresh my memory? What are we planning to use as the funding source?
The estate for David Parsons. So, that's just the acquisition. That's all they're talking about now, is the acquisition of the property. And then, it's, the whole building thing is not yet on the table. So, it's just getting the properties.
Right, no, I'm just checking. We're not looking for a debt exclusion over by just part of the property.
Nope. That money is coming from the will, from the estate, yep. So, all of that, you know, per, you know, guidance from KP Law and MGO process in terms of land acquisition. Scott's come up with a bit of a checklist, I guess, of the various things that we need to follow and get done. So, I think we're moving along fairly well on that one. So, there's a lot of things kind of in draft that the Senior Center Building Committee needs to take a look at and, you know, make some decisions and make sure that's all that they're talking about, too. But I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that? Okay, all right.
Some of the Chapter 30 Intergovernmental Notice provisions have extremely long timelines. This is 30-year-old information when I did acquisitions for the state of Massachusetts. And it bedeviled our schedules because it was statutory. And if you sought a waiver, you could sometimes get the body to waive the complete clock. But oftentimes, people forgot to ask.
Oh, yeah. Good to know. Yeah, no, I think so far, this seems like it's, this is a little bit easier one.
Yeah, it's not as time pressure.
Compared to the other one.
With the 30B, we can seek a waiver for all that because it's specifically in, so...
Yeah, okay. Public Safety Building Committee. Scott, you want to take that one a little bit?
Well, that one's changing by the hour.
That one's changing by the hour, yeah.
So, yeah, the Public Safety Building Committee, they met and they were reviewing some of the information that they wanted to distribute, going over the videos, video tours. So, I guess that's on track. One of the big questions is the acquisition of land. So, we do have an appraisal out for the land, and the owner of the Zero Collat Highway has committed to doing a survey of that, I guess, the sliver or the...
The carve-out of the donation plus the commercial property.
And that's going to be, hopefully, by the 20th of this month. So, it's getting very close to town meeting. So, if, you know, we have to have conversations about whether our due diligence is going to be completed by a town meeting or not, and...
And I think the other thing that that survey will do is to then have them bring it to Planning Board for an A and R, because that parcel, if it's cut out, that way, it's got to come for an A and R. So, that will be a matter of, you know, whenever the timing is for Planning Board on that. But that's at least starting to move forward. I think our challenge is more, do we go for, you know, given the group meeting that we had, where we were all pretty much interested on the bigger parcel, you know, what makes sense in terms of how we proceed. We know that there's a lot more to do if we get the bigger parcel, and whether we can pull that off by the regular town meeting, I think, personally, I think is a bit questionable. And it may be better to have it for a special town meeting a couple of months later, when we've got all of our ducks in a row on that one, and just understand what else involved, because that really will require more work, I think.
Can you, can you have a vote to acquire land only at a special town meeting? I thought that was one of the things that we were excluded from doing at a special town meeting.
To not to have it at a special town meeting?
Yeah.
Well, good question.
There are certain things that you can only do at a town meeting because you can't, like, post a notice and sneak something in. It's got to be at the end. And I thought land acquisition was one of them, but maybe not.
We will certainly double-check that with KP. We haven't heard otherwise yet, but we'll double-check that. Because I think, you know, part of our challenge is what we were debating, along with the public... we were debating, along with the public engagement strategies that the committee's going through. By the way, Quiz 2 is out on the website, so if anybody hasn't taken the quiz yet, take Quiz 2. But they're working on a video, they're working on a flyer, and a FAQ that will be on the website. So, they're trying to get some data together and get that out. We'll be doing some tours at the police and the fire station, too, and make those dates known once we get a little bit more precise on that. The challenge, I think, is trying to figure out, you know, do we go ahead and carve out the donated property and this frontage commercial lot, which is the excess, which is what we need, because we don't want to accept a landlocked parcel, and that would allow us to keep on moving independently, irrespective of whatever happens with the bigger parcel. Because what we've faced in many cases is, we might have something that goes well at town meeting, but then fails at the ballot box. So, if we all, you know, if we went for the bigger ball of wax, shall we say, to go for only the big parcel, have a good town meeting on it, but it may not pass the ballot box, public safety complex is sitting there with nothing yet again. So, we've decided to have a two-pronged strategy and kind of parallel both of these things to make them happen. So, we'll have two separate articles. At some point, we just have to figure out if we can get everything we need that's sufficient enough to make some decisions on by the May town meeting. It's going to be a push, but we'll see how much we can get done. So, we'll have more on that next week. But that was probably one of the things that I think Public Safety Building Committee has requested, that we have a joint meeting with them. And so, that's why I'd like to do that on the 26th. We'd probably have an executive session with them to go through some of this on the 26th.
March 26th.
Yeah. Our regular meeting, we'll just add an exec session on that. Okay?
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
You've done an excellent job setting out the rationale from the perspective of the public safety building mission, and the considerations about how to approach landowner, given what they've expressed and what the town knows its needs. But I think it's a policy choice, not a question of can we have enough information. Because I think that having enough information, you could argue it both ways. Which is the simple acquisition? Buy the whole thing, or have a custom cut that still has to be permitted and made legally available? Be that as it may, I think that the policy discussion really needs to be joined. And I ask who's speaking for the non-public safety interests in that parcel? Since you say they're running parallel, who's speaking for those?
Well, basically, the bigger parcel is up to Select Board at this point in time. And after we had that joint, sorry, after we had that joint meeting, I hate these tables. After we had that joint meeting, the idea was that there was no real opposition from the various committees and commissions that were present at that, that we should try to pursue that. So, that's why that's certainly still on the table. So, yeah, I mean, it's Select Board that needs to weigh in, in terms of what we think that's going to mean. And we need to have a good discussion and talk about financial implications, all sorts of things that go with that. And so, that's why I'd like to bring that up on the 26th as part of a discussion--
Can we wait that long?
--with public safety, but also adding on Select Board's perspective for the pros and cons of the bigger thing and the timing of that.
How would you like the Select Board to get up to speed, to engage on the 26th?
Good question. Do you have some thoughts? I mean, we've got some documents that we would probably have to get ready to show people. I don't know that we would have, we haven't, we would have the 26th--
I would volunteer to work with the Town Administrator--
Okay.
--on this channel--
Okay.
--inasmuch as you've got obligations on the Public Safety Building Committee.
Okay.
And that policy choice will inevitably be in tension.
Yeah. We would have, so by then, we should have, we may or may not have the appraisal on that one.
It's going to be close. Always subject to appraisal.
Maybe tight on that one.
Always subject to.
Yeah, so all we, you know, as we put together articles for the town meeting, a lot of things can be, you know, subject to, contingent upon, however we word that officially.
I think we can do the technical stuff. What we need to do is get it distilled to a point where we can communicate to the public--
Yeah, exactly.
--what it is we're thinking about.
Correct. I think that's true. That is true. So, we'll have a couple of pieces of documentation by that meeting, but the survey and then maybe the A&R we should have. But other than that, we may not have a lot of other stuff yet. We wouldn't have done, well, we need to decide. If we're going to go forward, then do we do a purchase and sale, get that ready now, you know, all those kinds of things. It takes a bit of time, because right now, that's a lengthier process. I mean, this one moved pretty quickly on College, sorry, Clark Street, but this other one, you know, does require a bit more detail, I think. So, yeah, I think Stephen will take you up on your offer, and we'll work together with Scott and figure out how we can pull something together on that.
Right.
Okay? Great. Thank you. So, all right. That's about all we know right now. But just to say, we're, the Public Safety Building Committee is working diligently. We're meeting weekly, trying to work on public engagement strategies. So, there will be things to listen and hear about and visit on our website, so. All right, next up, Scott, Charter Spectrum contract renewal. I think you handed out something that was an addendum to, just, we're not ready to act on this yet. It was just informational, anyway.
Yeah, it was just informational. It's just the Section 626 that they referenced in their library--
Yeah.
--in their letter, so you're just aware of it. So--
Right.
There is a process that we can take either formal, informal--
Okay, so this--
--but I'm still kind of researching that.
So, this defined the MGL section, yeah, more clearly, okay, for us. Yeah, since none of us knew what that was all about, so thank you for researching that. So, this we'll have to put, I don't know when we have to make a decision on this. I'm forgetting what was the--
I think we have six months to start engaging Charter.
Okay, so we--
How do we go out and put stuff to bid?
Dan, sorry.
Oh, yeah, right.
No, we can't hear you down here. I mean, just talk louder.
How do we put stuff to bid to other companies besides Charter?
The process is a little bit different than that, so it's essentially, I still have to research it. There's a lot more research, but there's--
Yeah, yeah. I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
You have to go through a process where we evaluate their customer service and--
Okay.
--technology and whether or not they've upheld their part of the agreement. Then we could move forward with canceling the agreement, and then they have an appeals right to that, so.
Sounds good. Let's do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it may be that we would have to have a public hearing. Not sure, in terms of, you know, getting the public's, you know, input in terms of their service with Charter, et cetera. So, that, there's a bit more that probably has to be done there. But as long as we're not under the gun to get something done within the next month or so, that's fine. We just know that we have to keep it on the list. So, we'll keep it under the old business line or something going forward, so that we, you know, we know we've got to act on it.
So, for what it's worth, I, for one, would support going in a completely different direction. Now that we've created, done the process of creating our own municipal light plant, I say we actually take over the whole process and then award a franchise to one of our budding municipal power companies, which then does require the purchasing of all the wires and telephone poles and all that section. But I think we need to take it over and put it back, at least explore the idea--
Yeah.
--put it back under our control. And looking just at the rates of what Hoyot does and Westfield does, I got to think financially, it would be worthwhile at some point.
Yeah.
And if, sorry, Chris, and if we're going down the road with fiber optics anyways.
Right. No, and I think that's where, you know, that's why I was hoping we didn't have to act too quickly, because the RFI has gone out to both Whip City and Hoyot Gas and Electric Shed to get some information, a proposal in from them, in terms of what it would be to help us move forward, in terms of the poll study and all of that kind of stuff, and get an, you know, an idea from them.
But it includes electricity, or is the scope strictly related to Internet right now?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dan. Is it just broadband, or did it include electricity on the MLP?
The MLP is just for fiber, for Internet, I should say, broadband.
Just for fiber right now, I guess. Okay. So, we'll at least have that, we should have that back in before the end of the month, thereabouts, too. So, we'll at least have something to work on from that point of view, at least as we start thinking about that versus Charter and as we go forward. But once we do a Charter, if we did a Charter one, I mean, this has still got another three years to go?
I think so.
Yeah, this has still got three years on this one. It's a 10-year agreement.
Why'd it take us that long to get ready?
They know us. So, yeah, so they came out really quickly, looking for their renewal already in year seven or whatever here. But, yeah. So, hopefully, we can, you know, have enough information so that we can figure out whether this makes sense to continue this way, or open up competition, or control it ourselves, or whatever it may be. So, that, it just requires a whole lot more, because you'd have to have a municipal light, what is it called? Committee? I forget what, there's a term for it. There's a--
Commissioners?
Commission, maybe, I mean, something. There's got to be special, special people involved in that somehow. So, that's another layer of things that we haven't even thought about yet, but. Good, we will keep it on the list. John, where do we stand with our fire chief recruitment and so forth?
So, we've continued to make progress on this and are working our way forward. And recently, the committee has, if you wanted to attend, entered an intersection and needs directions. So, they've asked me to come back to the Select Board for discussion. And so, I will tee that up with the Chair separately to figure out how we--
Okay.
--do that.
All right. All right.
Probably not in a public session.
Okay, all right. Well, we can figure that out.
On the status of the assessment center, or is that also--
It's part of the crossroad.
Part.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. And we'll just have to keep track of, I forget when we did our interim appointment.
Didn't we finally just bump it out to June 30th, or when?
Trying to think. When we did the extension for Chief Fosoli, in terms of his appointment, we just have to check what, how long that went, so that we, if we have to extend it, we have to. I think we did put it out a little bit further, but I don't remember exactly when. It might have been June 30th, that's possible. Okay. We will get back on that. Let's assume we'll pick it up maybe at the next agenda, next meeting or something. So far, things are seeming to work quite well. I think, I know they've been busy putting out fires here and there and dealing with things. They've had a busy, there was a thing that came out on, I guess it was on Facebook, but they put out their monthly runs and all the business, you know, the work that they've been doing, the number of calls that they've responded to. So, they've been quite busy, to say the least. One of the things that we do probably want to get back on the agenda at some point, and it may tie into with the budget hearings, although we've already had the fire chief come before us, the interim is the air quality study over at the fire station, because trailer wasn't so much terrible, but boy, just looking at that report, if you haven't had a chance, do read it, because the ceiling tiles alone are just falling in. There's mold, there's black mold in there. I mean, this has got to get dealt with. So, we need to probably--
Within the building, right?
In the main building itself. And we had at the last, at the main town meeting, annual town meeting in May, we had put forth, I think it was around $30,000, had been approved by the residents, to put in, I believe it was an extraction--
38, yep.
--system on the fire trucks themselves. But from what Chief Fosoli has told us very briefly, he doesn't think that that's the right way to go, that it's more of a, kind of a HEPA filter system within the, in the building itself, rather than on the fire truck. So, anyway, more discussion to be had on that, but hopefully, it would fit within the envelope that we've already approved at town meeting. So, we're waiting to hear a little bit more about that. So, that'll be a--
Yeah.
--further issue as we go forward on fire. But we're trying to make some remediation on that current situation, because they'll be there for a while, no matter what.
Right. So, I mean, one of the recommendations, you know, again, going back to Chief Anderson's report, is we haven't, we haven't done anything on his recommendation to go explore that space behind that Red Rock, yeah, Red Rock Plaza, those buildings in the back that may or may not be used. You know, finding a temporary location for the fire department now, while we wait for the public safety building to be built.
Yeah, there's been nothing done on that parcel. Yeah. So, yeah, we have to come back around, I think, on a couple of those reports and really have a further discussion about action items and what to do. I mean, certain things have been acted upon from Chief Anderson's report, but not that.
Could I ask a question about the ceiling tiles? Has anybody costed? Is that part of the report, the cost to repair that or remove that?
I don't think there was a cost estimate in the, it was just an air quality test, so they were just noting all the various deficiencies. And so, but that's something that, I don't know if it got put into their capital request or anything. I'm not sure if it ever did. So, that's something that may be in the budget as we get going, that we have to take, take under consideration.
I failed to mention, Capitol Committee is meeting next Thursday at 3:00 PM.
Oh, great. Okay, very good. Capitol Thursday, so not this week, but next Thursday? Next, or this Thursday week?
Today?
I think--
You got me confused before on the 14th.
I did, too, but--
3:00 PM on 20, that would be great.
Yes, on the, on the next week, 21st.
On 21st. Okay, very good. Great. Glad to hear that they are meeting then. Good. All right. Okay. Scott, anything on FY '22 audits that you're aware of?
I was able to reach out to Tanya Campbell, Elvret Markham, who's doing the audit. Just a couple hours ago, I finally got a response from her. It's going to take a little bit more time for her to kind of put everything together. One of the questions that she had was regarding our ARPA funding. And talking to Ed and doing a little research, we think that the reports that she's requesting aren't necessary. But she said it's going to take a couple of weeks for her to look at it and respond to us. So, I'm going to have to email her again tomorrow and kind of see if we can get a little bit sooner than that.
Right. Yeah, I think she, I think, was looking for some sort of reports that were being put into Treasury on a regular basis. And I think the way we declared ourselves under ARPA was for under lost revenue, which meant that we had less paperwork to do--
Right.
--vis-à-vis Treasury, so--
They may just need to provide a certified copy of those.
Yeah, so I think it may just be that she's missing a copy of whatever our report filing was on that and that decision. Hopefully, that will not be a big problem to solve. But, all right. And then FY '23 closeout, we're just waiting, again, mostly on reconciliations with the school and so forth. Yeah, okay. Okay, so I guess--
I was with you, Chris, until you slipped that word "mostly" in there. So, that tells me there's stuff on the town side as well.
Well, no, as far as I know, I mean, I was confused on something I saw that just showed us other deficits, but I was misunderstanding what I read. So, I take that back. The note that I understood from Bradley is that there's just, I had asked him a couple of things about the school, and there's a couple of deficit lines that I know he wants clarity on that were basically related to tuition, school choice, and Charter tuition, I think, are the two that look like they were running a deficit on his books.
Well, did he book the cherry sheet money?
I don't--
Sorry.
Yep. And then with the, with the grants that maybe they've gotten to and how they've accounted for all their grant money. So, I think there were, those were the main things that he was trying to reconcile a bit. And then separately, and I've asked Scott to work with Jen and just get us a list of whatever our current debt load is, and, you know, what are the next couple of things that are going to be coming off our debt? You know, are we getting to the end of paying off something, so that we know how many more payments there might be and what's coming off, so as we have to maybe substitute something, we know what's out there. The bridge just went on this past year.
Right, so you can get that by looking at the, at the statement of indebtedness that the Treasurer has to file every year.
Right, yeah. We've asked for it. I haven't seen it. I haven't caught up with her, but Scott has talked--
Okay, because that'll have a summary number, and then down below should be all the detail that falls into that.
Yeah. So, Scott's going to grab that from Jen, so we can have that to work from, yeah.
And we want a complete understanding. The entire debt structure is that we retire over potentially 20 years.
Yeah, there's some things that are, you know--
When you introduced the topic, it sounded like you were looking for a subset, which I didn't understand.
Well, there's some that is long-term borrowing, long-term debt, and then there's others that have been debt exclusion. So, there might be some debt exclusion that might be coming up soon. I don't know, you know, looking at the list, I'm not sure when they started as being on our, on our list of--
Right.
You know, under the debt category, debt service category.
Their declining payments, their level payments, there are all sorts. But if we don't have a comprehensive view--
Yeah.
--we'll end up with more questions.
Right. So, I think, you know, whatever we can get from Jen's reports, that will be great. Okay. All right. Next, revenue projections, Scott. This is something that you've managed to create a bit with Bradley and maybe Ed's helped both, or whatever you've tried to tackle here on revenue projections. So, let's talk it through a little bit.
So, I had sent out the spreadsheet and the PDF just on what the revenue projections are going to be for FY '25. Ed was able to put together most of them before he left. But I also wanted to kind of show where we were over the last previous two fiscal years up until this point. So, we have the revenue projections for all of FY '25 for the estimates, but we also are comparing to see how things are running out. So, Bradley was had enough to put together the actuals for FY '23 and FY '24, and where they were at this point of time, what we have right now for revenues. So, currently, we have, our current revenues up until 12/31. So, we took until 12/31 on the orange column and 12/31 on the red column. And then our estimates for FY '25 are in the green column. So, if you look at it, most of the revenues are consistent. So, for example, if we look at motor vehicle and excise tax, so in FY '23-- So for example, if we look at motor vehicle and excise tax, so in FY23, we were at 12% revenue. For FY24, we were at 14%. So, you know, Ed's estimate was about $20,000 more than last year. Similarly, if you, um, there's another good one. So meals tax as well. So initially, for meals tax, FY23's estimate was $50,000 and at this point in that year, we received 60%, 66% of the estimated. Last year, we received 60% of the estimated halfway through the year. So Ed had upped the estimate from 50,000 to 55,000.
So just to be clear, Scott, so the orange column and the green column, just for anybody who might be watching this from home, represent only six months' worth. It does not represent a full year.
Right.
Okay.
So a lot of the, the revenues, like the local receipts and other available funds, those are a little bit more dependent on meals tax, you know, and how, you know, how many meals people actually go out and eat. Um, you know, the cannabis tax is one thing I do want to point out. I'm gonna be meeting with Michelle from KP Law just to kind of talk about that situation. She's gonna bring me up to speed.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But so far, most of it's on track and I think Ed's estimates are pretty, pretty reliable.
Where we like ambulance receipts, that's one where we keep moving it around a little bit and I think we've gone up on it over time.
Uh, ambulance receipts.
Yeah. Uh.
This one right here.
Or is it there?
So we have an FY25 estimate of 50,000 and at this point in the last two fiscal, oh, actually FY23 is missing, but last year for FY24, we already had 107% of our revenue estimate.
Yep. Those are receipts? That's money coming, is that money coming in to the fire department or is that money coming in for charges of service? Cause I thought that was us appropriating from our ambulance receipts into the general fund to support the budget.
I can double check that for you. I'm pretty sure that's, those are the actual receipts that we're, that we're receiving.
Cause the two at the bottom, the water enterprise and the transfer station are both monies that would be coming into the general fund from those enterprise funds, right? Um, I thought there was an ambulance, I thought there was an ambulance billing.
I'm on expenses.
Hmm. Maybe not.
Well, it'd be on the balance sheet.
Yeah.
Um, ambulance, ambulance fees.
This is on.
Cause this is, so I'm on page 2 of 12 of Bradley's latest revenue report and it's other financing sources, ambulance fees estimated to be 125. We added 134, that's still, never mind. That's still with a budget placeholder we put in there.
That looks like that's what that line is. So the estimate for 25 is 175,000. 50,000 more estimated than last year. So it's in the, what's being thought about right now?
Oh, other special revenue funds, ambulance fees, 244001. And that's showing that there's 181,000 available for appropriation of which they're suggesting they move 175 up there.
Yeah.
And if that's a six-month number and.
Yeah. Doing okay on that. Yeah. All right. What about, um, well, we had, before you came, Scott, we, last year sometime, we had our, um, our investment company come in and talk to us a little bit about what's going on with some of our investment funds. We've got some earnings there, but I'm not sure that that has really reflected as much as our markets have been over the last year. But again, it's up to what, 89 for, well, maybe not. FY24, 89,000, is that what I'm reading? That's actuals. Maybe that is better than I thought it was. Okay. All right. So this gets us at least some projections of things to work from.
So can I ask a question that is somewhat related to this? Do we know what the holdup is now on why we can't get the timely financials? Why are we still sitting on this in December? We're in the second week of March. I understand the 30, I understand the one-month lag.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and we, we, we pushed and pushed to get those two departments up to speed and they did, and it seems like we've hit this, we always hit this roadblock in December.
Yeah, that's true.
And we go all the way through the budget process half-blind.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I mean, we'd, we'd sort of been making an allowance for a four-week, maybe six-week maximum lag between expense and revenue, but you know, to get January's done, that would be more than helpful. I'm sincerely hoping that whenever we convert over to VADAR, that this is gonna be a little bit easier and we're gonna be able to see these figures more readily than we have been now. Because that's, that's been a frustration where we, we don't really know how, how well we're spending against our revenue.
Correct. And, and I mean, the treasurer's office, treasurer collector's office is fully staffed and I think it's been four months since then. So, you know, you gotta allow for training and getting folks up to speed and, you know, there's an update later on about our assistant town accountant. You know, hopefully there's good news that someone has been identified. Maybe not. That's why it's at the end of the agenda. But I mean, we, it's, it's hard to make these decisions and choices when you, you don't have real-time data in front of you. That's all.
Is it, is it true that it's the income that's lagging the expenses or more real-time?
Expenses are more real-time. The revenues are two months behind.
Not recognized.
The revenues are through December right now. Yeah. Which makes it hard, like when you look at, not only for us, but others that rely on grant money. So for example, I mean, COA, for example.
Correct. Until you close 22, the audit, you can't do those journal entries to load it into 23 and we're, we're up in 24. So those revolving accounts haven't been brought forward. So, you know, an example is the transfer station. How in the world, you don't know what your, you know, unspent cash or excess funds are. So you're flying blind.
Your retained earnings and costs.
Thank you. I was losing what the words were.
Yeah. But I think it is true. I mean, there's, cause there's so many, I mean, from Conservation Commission to various others that have got revolving funds that they rely on, you know, for some of their, their work and they're, you know, it's really hard for them to manage and know where things are so they end up having to, you know, keep on bugging the accountant to figure out where are we with our spending. And so that, you know, whatever we can do to try and push that revenue getting closer and closer, you know, on a more regular basis, cause I think.
And maybe just with Scott's a fresh set of eyes.
Yeah.
Can we, can we just revisit?
Yeah.
Well, you, you revisit, Scott, on what everybody thinks the, what the issue is and what, where are the pain points and can we, can we resolve those how and when?
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, it maybe it's just, you know, having a meeting, you know, with treasurer collector's staff and just sort of saying, how are, how are things delegated? Who does what in terms of helping do that and just understanding that maybe? And if we can help, you know, shorten the process somehow or, you know, at least get us, whatever they have to do, if there's some, not to create extra work, but if there's some other spreadsheet or something that we can have to see where we are, just so we feel more in control of our budget, I think would be helpful.
Yeah. I mean, just looking at the, our purchase ordering system and how we track receipts and how we track what's being spent, I definitely think there's ways that we can modernize that.
Yeah, good. I think we'd be open to hearing new, new ways of doing things. So we kind of get stuck in a rut over time and I think it's time for some fresh eyes and new perspectives, so we appreciate that. Um, do you want to do anything with the other two tabs? Is there anything you can say about those or, those are Bradley's?
Those are Bradley, I didn't have, yeah, I tried to make it a little bit more user-friendly.
Yeah. Okay.
So I didn't have a chance to go through those with Bradley yet, but yeah.
All right. Well, I think when we have our, our budget meeting, we should probably have, you know, Bradley, you know, be here too and just kind of help us walk through some of this as well. So, anybody have any other questions for right now? It was more just to give us an idea of what, what's been done so far and what we're kind of looking at. We don't have much more to say about it at this point, but we will definitely pick it back up. So thanks for putting that much together so we have a somewhat of an idea of what's going on.
Fair, fair.
Yeah. All right. Next up, 25 budget hearings with finance committee. So I think I mentioned that. We will just have to be sure that FinCom is, they're the ones that kind of set the date, I think, of the 21st as the date that they would next be available.
They did.
When they were at their meeting the other night.
Yep.
That was the night that they said they could. Um, but I think it would just be budget. Excuse me. Losing my voice.
Is that a call for a motion to adjourn?
No, not quite, not quite. We're getting there. I told Joy we'd, we'd be on target tonight. So that, just to reiterate, I think COA, library and border health, and then we can pick up a little bit on the school as well, but to have the budget hearings on the 21st and probably, probably at 6 unless FinCom can only meet, I don't know what time they, do they usually meet at? At 6 or at 7? Sorry. Thank you. What time do they usually meet, John? Is it?
I think it's 6 o'clock.
6? Okay. So we'll aim for 6 and try to do that. That would be good. All right. That would probably be the last group of budget hearings. I don't know that we'll have others that we, I mean, we may need to come back and revisit fire, police or highway, maybe highway.
I mean, I think we're definitely gonna have to have a, a discussion on schools. They're just not ready.
They're not ready, yeah. Exactly right. So whenever they're ready, yeah, exactly. All right. Um, okay. Any other business that can't wait until our next meeting? So just to reiterate, we've got the 21st joint with FinCom, the 26th will be our regular meeting. Scott and I were talking about maybe a finance, what were we talking about? It was a finance meeting on the 19th, just if we needed one, but we weren't sure whether we needed one or we'd just follow into the, the 21st. So 19th wasn't a definitive, anything, but the 21st and 26th, we know, block those off if you will. And then into April, we may as well just note those will be April 9th and the 23rd at this point, and there may be some extras in there too, but we'll try to keep them organized from, you know, we'll meet when we've got enough to meet about, but it's gonna be budget-related once we get it going, yeah, okay? Trying to balance the budget, it's gonna be a little bit of a challenge this year, I think, but we will do our best.
Well, I would suggest we start off with zeroing up select board wages.
Select board wages? Yeah, that's, that sounds good.
We'll get a full long one.
We're all pulling down way too much money, I know.
You've exceeded the overtime budget.
Exactly. Okay. Anything under old business, Scott? I don't know that there's probably anything really that's happened in the last week since you've been on board yet, so.
No, just David's been really helpful with the, the voice.
David Rooks, yeah.
David Rooks, yep.
Yeah, shout out to David, yeah.
So we're, we're debating who's gonna do the voice for the town phone.
The auto attendant, yes.
Yep. So, and then the, the cannabis payments, again, I'm just meeting with Michelle from KP Law just to kind of bring me up to speed on everything, so.
Good. Okay.
If, if, if nobody's really jumping for Joy to be the voice, why don't you throw it out there on the community forum and ask for a resident to step forward? First one in, come right in.
I think we've got a person or two maybe identified, just a matter of getting the timing and getting the recording done. But, okay, so we'll keep those on the list and come back around. No licenses, signatures, no other warrants. Um, we've got a couple of sets of minutes to approve, I think, for December 5th and December 19th.
I move, we approve select board minutes for December 5th and December 19th, 2023.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Stephen, second by John. Okay. Just to say, I think Kathy Ingram, who does our minutes, just does a great job transcribing our, our texts here and these are quite detailed and she's definitely gonna be working with us going forward, so we much appreciate her, her efforts on this.
Comprehensive and yet not overly detailed. That's a beautiful thing.
They're not overly detailed?
They are not too detailed.
Okay.
They are rather comprehensive.
They're comprehensive. That's the right word. Okay, there we go. Thank you.
Very good.
That is the right word. Okay, so motion on the floor, all those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion approved, that was for both sets of December 5th and December 19th. And Scott, I think you've got the hard copies that our clerk can sign in the red folder. So Dan is our, Dan is our man.
That was just part of the, that's the list of the liquid properties. No discussion. No, it's just referenced.
All right. And then pending items, pending items, I don't know that there was anything else on the East Street.
You've asked for.
Tip at all on this, there's, that's just there so we don't forget about it. The things that moved forward a little bit on getting the East Street Road section on the Transportation Improvement Plan List down in Boston, but we'd heard about that probably about a month or so ago. So it's just there for our reminder that the big thing, the two big things are finding our contact. I know the person from Eversource had come in to at least check in on where we were with the Green Communities Grants, but we, they've done their part to my understanding, but we need the Department of Revenue person, whoever's got them down there to approve these things so we can get these four projects done, cause there's one for library, I think, highway, police and town hall, or maybe school.
Which agency at the state is holding it?
It's the Department of Revenue. I'm not sure who it is and I'd have to go back and look.
It's not in.
It's the Green Communities Program. It's the Green Communities Program under the Department of Revenue. And so they, they've, they've got them there and they, you know, they take their time to review them and make sure that we're meeting our, our goal of the 20% energy savings and so forth, but we've identified.
I don't have connections in that department, but in the environmental secretary.
Yeah, I'm sure we've got a name somewhere. We just have to follow it up. And then I know you've made comments to Bradley about getting recruiting going again. That's kind of had fallen off the radar screen, but I think with anything from Indeed to ZipRecruiter to whomever's out there, just to get some, get our names back out there